We'll call the door of the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting of Monday, August the 5th, 2019, at 9:02. Please let us stand and remember our neighbors to the east and south this day. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Craig Craft, I think we had the roll call place.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Reagan.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
So we have a need for a public hearing today, so we'd like to open a public hearing at this time for the property of 1710 South Liberty. Is there anybody in favor or against?
There is no way. I think I should close the public.
No, yes.
Oh.
No.
I'm sorry.
I think we must close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you. Martin, on the table business of the platte.
Yes.
Subdivision. Want to bring that up today. Is it ready to be removed?
Removed?
It's under.
It was table business, so we'd have to make a motion to remove it before we do anything else.
Right. I'll make a motion to remove the platte for A, B, C, D, G.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
So does that point you say remove, remove from the table?
Remove the table. Yes.
Yeah. This had been before you at your second meeting in July and there, it was tabled at that time. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to try to answer them, or I believe someone is here representing this. Yeah. Andrew, right? Andrew Rozell from AR Engineering. If you have any questions, if you have anything you would like to be added for your consideration of the right-of-way dedication, I would also say that, of course, if the platte is approved, it creates a building site and any access to 300 West would be subject to a driveway permit and any requirements that might be placed upon that driveway could be done at that time, you know, that could take whatever form, XL, Dcel, side ditching work, et cetera. So this is sort of the beginning phase of creating a parcel. So I don't know if you have any questions.
How wide a lot is it?
You mean in terms of north-south?
Yeah.
Yeah, 165 feet. And then on the St. 67 side, it's 208 since 67's at an angle.
Well, we have the same store try to locate in a different area out here on 67 South. And I'm going to make a motion that we do not approve this. We vote this down. The reason being is there is quite a few of these Dollar Generals around. There's one of them located in Albany that is horrible. They don't take care of their land or their building. One in Albany is full of, the parking lot's full of holes in the asphalt. There's cigarette butts that litter the sidewalk around it. The front doors, the door bars on the interior side of the front doors were loose, so they took them off. Doesn't have any, doesn't have any door handles on the front door. We've had continual problems with them mowing their property and we have problems with trash that is out there. So for that reason, I make a motion to vote against this.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Sir, I would suggest you make contact with our economic development team.
If I may?
Yeah, sure.
Andrew Rozell with AR Engineering. I understand your concern with the, with this, and the upkeep of certain stores. However, as a generalization, this is owned by the same person that developed the Muncie Wheeling Store, which we have not heard any complaints of. They've done several other stores in the community with this property being zoned commercial. I find it hard to believe that you could put that stipulation on it and deny this for that.
Yeah. You know, I've tried to contact Dollar General several times. I've spoken with the regional manager and nothing, nothing gets done. I mean, why would we want these stores put in neighborhoods when they're not friendly neighbors? That's, that's, that's a problem I have.
Okay. So I'll definitely take that back.
Great.
I just think.
I have photographs too, sir, if you'd like copies of those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This lot was just too narrow. Okay. Thank you. Approval minutes, July 15th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you.
Sure, the flatland resource thing.
It's.
Did we take it on the table last meeting?
Andrew, you've never been able to sit down with him, have you?
Phil Havas did contact me. I'm not sure what.
He's not here.
He explained to me that you approached him and Mardo was included and looked at our old ADA study. I think it'd be really, if this does happen, we'd have someone from the Fair Round be overseeing this, like the maintenance supervisor, because he knows rounds better.
Right, right. But we just need to get.
But I'm not familiar, so I wouldn't, I guess, any more detail. But I don't know if this is a project you offer, you want to continue.
Well, that's what we need to have him talk to, sit down. So let's leave it on the table one more time.
I don't know about finding who's paying for it or anything.
Do you want to just remove that and then have it brought back to us at a later date? Even get with somebody from the Fair Board?
Well.
Because really, nobody knows much about this.
I agree. I'll make a motion to remove it from the table.
Huh? I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay. We'll start over there.
I'll make a motion. We remove this from our agenda until there's discussion between Angie, Phil Havas, and somebody from the Fair Board and the maintenance from the fair, so we can get a little bit more information and understand what this project's all about.
I'll stop.
Because I don't think anybody really understands it right now.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Did we do the minutes? We did the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. Contracts and agreements. Who's here to speak on behalf of this?
Commissioners, there is a representative from our Randall Miller Associates. They have applied for a drainage application, have submitted the permit, the plans and the hydraulics, but they are requesting a variance. So our consulting engineer has reviewed the request and recommends approval. And what this variance is, is to not install an underdrain and the proposed dry pond infiltration trench. If you want more specific, Jason Miller here is going to give you more details, but our consulting engineer did recommend approval. It's had to go through the board of commissioners.
I was just kind of curious, is the pond in the, behind the?
Oh, no, it is in the southwest corner of the property. That's, that's the lowest area. Everything drains to the pond and then the pond will infiltrate into the groundwater. Since there's infiltration, it's relatively pointless to have an underdrain. Normally, underdrains would be installed when you have a dry basin that would discharge to a storm sewer or another ditch. Here, we're recharging groundwater, so would request approval of the variance for removal of the underdrain requirement from the ordinance.
Do you have any drawings with you?
I do. Would you like to see them?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Stand along the ridge, Jim.
Also from reference, this is located at 8600 East Windsor Road.
And the engineer has?
Has reviewed the plan.
Has reviewed it. He's okay with it.
So he's just waiting on the variance approval so they can proceed with the planning building.
And this is all we have. So they just signed this?
It's just in the minutes. I mean, I don't have a one-year document.
Okay.
I can create one.
Is there an overview where the pond's at on the area this year? And there's your pond?
Correct. So the new building, I'm located here, parkam on the front, pond in the southwest corner.
Okay.
And so the?
That's by that fence.
You're just, you're just not typing into a creek anywhere.
Correct. A soil report indicated that the groundwater is deep enough and the soil below the pond was going to allow infiltration. So basically, the pond will discharge into the ground.
Okay.
So here's Windsor.
Yes. It's a fence.
Correct.
Trees they put on.
Correct. And here's the parkam on the front.
So is it a slope so it can be mowed?
Absolutely.
It's not filled.
So Windsor Road, west property line, pond, parkam on the building, and the residence is up here.
Second.
Does Mardo have work with it? Or working on that pond?
Andrew, you were working with the engineering company, correct?
Yes, and I have included in your packet, it's his recommendation of approval.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ordinance for first reading, ordinance 2019 dash 014, establishing the sheriff's bag. Reagan.
Make a motion to approve.
This is introductions.
Greg Ellison from the Sheriff's Department. This is the standard Jack Grant that we do every year. It's just an ordinance to make the fund forward.
I'll second the introduction.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Do you need it approved now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2019 dash 15, Delaware County creating a fund for deposit of state funds received by the Delaware Circuit Court for incentives actions for the Delaware County Probation Department.
Good morning. This is just a, the probation department was awarded, I'm Jeff Hanser, Chief Probation Officer. The probation department was awarded technical assistance from the Indiana Office of Court Services and University of Cincinnati to develop incentives and sanctions programs for our clients. There was funding tied to that award, $1,500.
So this is going to like, when they need some help, some sort of?
It's sticks and carrots, is the best way I could describe it.
Something to keep them coming back.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to introduce.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you, Jeff. Resolution.
Is this, is this one that you need the money right away, or do you have the money already in hand, or?
No, they, they've already transmitted the money to the auders, but we don't need it right away. We have a meeting that's going to occur in October, but they went ahead and transmitted the funds well in advance.
Do you need us to go ahead and suspend the rules?
I would suggest that since the money's in the auders, all the money plays in that fund that's created, then you can spend it whenever you want to, but at least have the money in the fund.
All right, very good.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2019 dash 015.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, now we have a resolution for approval, 2019 dash 327, determination of that nonprofit.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you. Department has elected officials.
One thing that the commissioners need to vote on and approve, the option period for the, the building where the health department's located, their lease expires in September and the $1 option price needs to be exercised at the end of the lease period. So I'm asking the commissioners to decide if they want to exercise that, you'll need a motion, we'll put in the minutes, if that's what you want to do.
I'll make, make a motion that, like, if they purchase it for $1.
$1.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
I will send a letter to the owner that the county has exercised the option.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Waits the major turned in their report and the payment of claims of $2,469,545.20.
I'll make a motion to pay the claims.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Time for the public to come forward if they have any comments. Anybody else?
John, have you heard anything back from the city? I know the paper stated that it could be like weeks' way before they do the EMS.
No, I have not heard anything from the city at all.
Jason, have you?
Jason, could you come up?
Morning, Commissioners, Jason Rogers, Merced Avenue Director. I have, I got a text message from Rachel Clark in reference to mutual aid or backing them up, is essentially what the text was. At that time, she was not an employee of the city. So before I answered that, I emailed the fire chief and just asked if she had, she was representing the city of Muncie on fire-based EMS issues and did she speak for him as the fire chief? And I just wanted to confirm that before I got into any conversation with, with her or anybody. And I've not heard back from that email that was sent, at least a week or two weeks ago.
It'd be nice for us to know when they plan on putting their ambulance service out. What's going to go on?
Might still say with no agreements in place, we can't run.
I take that back. It was July 30th when I sent that email. Last week.
I know the Board of Works last week, so is she going to be a contract employee?
Contend.
Or is she going to be a battalion chief for the fire department?
According to the paper, she was a contract employee. That's why the Board of Works approved it as opposed to?
So they could go around the city council?
And the mayor.
And the mayor commission. Oh, boy.
Yeah, I think that meeting was Wednesday or Thursday.
Yeah.
And I had sent the email in reference to Ms. Clark on Tuesday, and I also covered a copy, Chief Ranger on that. I've not heard anything back. So we're just continuing our operations as is, and as I stated, I think in the last meeting, we've got some contingency plans that are just waiting to be decided on what that means and how that best suits the county with whatever they implement.
Well, I know in the letter that we received from their current aide, that they said that they were going to have the best service for the citizens of Muncie. I don't even think the citizens of Muncie understand what they're doing. All I know is, I don't think it's going to be good.
Yeah, what I, I, you humor me for just a second, I'll read it to you. It said, "I received a message from Rachel Clark in reference to mutual aid with MFP. I wanted to confirm that she's representing you and the city of Muncie in these matters. I did not, I did not want to assume that she was already an employee of yours, so if you could please provide me with an official email that you want me to use for her, I would be happy to CC you with any correspondence." That's what, that's what my email.
Why would you, why would you send someone a text message about something that important?
I kind of want to.
No, it makes no sense whatsoever.
What you doing? Thanks, Jason. Appreciate it.
Yep.
I'm sorry?
Ranger or Eddie?
Send it to Eddie.
I explained, I share, I do.
Yeah, for my minutes.
Thank you. So we have John sending another letter.
I don't know if that would be really any good. We'll probably get the same smart aleck response that we got last time, that, you know, they don't have to let us know anything, but it's our EMS service that's working in the city limits now, and, you know, we would like to know something. Actually, if you drive around and you look at where they're going to place the ambulances and stuff at, the city's still going to have to cross railroad tracks to go to certain areas because the city of Muncie's made up of railroad tracks. So I don't understand their logic about putting them in these certain areas because they won't have to cross over, but if Delaware County EMS, if they're not putting certain areas, they're still going to cross railroad tracks. And without an agreement put in place, we don't know if they even want us. But nobody wants to sit down and talk to us, nobody wants to say a word to us about it, but drive around Muncie. Maybe the fire chief and the mayor don't understand, but we have railroad tracks everywhere. We're going to put three ambulances in place. You're going to have to cross a railroad track somewhere. So what they're saying, I don't either.
But it's still the issue that according to the statute, for us to operate in the city, we have to have the, a resolution from the city. And the city adopted a resolution in, what, '77 or '79? One of those times.
'77.
'77, that's what I thought, '77 for us to operate. They haven't rescinded that, so that doesn't mean that the county still can't respond to ALS and BLS calls in the city. And unless and until they do that, the county has every right to operate in the city. And now you've got a duplication.
Right.
Of services that's going to go on between the fire and the county.
We can't, we can't operate that way.
No, we can't.
And not operate that way.
My understanding of the state statute is, which it's evolved over the last 40 years, but the state statute currently states that the jurisdiction having authority has the ability to say who responds to the 911 calls. But it also states that if you have the authority to operate EMS in one jurisdiction in the state of Indiana, you are grandfathered into all of the jurisdictions in the state of Indiana. So I don't think it's a matter of whether or not we can run in the city. We, we can, that's, and anybody else can too, because you used to have to get county approval to start and operate an EMS service. That is so involved. So it, the question is really going to be, I guess, in Paul Singleton's court as to how things get dispatched and who gets dispatched.
Right.
And, and I think that's, that's more of a concern for him. I'm not, I'm not worried about what we're doing because we've, we've got the resources, the manpower and the ability to provide all those services. I also, like I indicated, we have several plans and it may change to make what we do and how we do it, but it does not necessarily, it's not necessarily going to change the delivery of medical care. Thank you.
But you can't, we can't, we can't get to a place where we're sending two ambulances and paramedics to one single call. Whoever gets there first gets the call. We can't do that.
No, and I.
We've got to have agreements in place.
That's a, that's a, that's a horrible misuse of resources.
Absolutely.
And it's not fair to the county taxpayers to take an ambulance out of the county, send it into the city just because they won't answer.
The, the other issue is, is if Singleton, maybe, maybe an ambulance don't respond for whose territory it is. You know, maybe you start getting into issues where you start risking public safety. And that's why I say it's either, we've got to have agreements, or they have to handle it, or we have to handle it. Something's up. And maybe we need a letter from John, just, just asking them to provide us information on territory, mutual aid, and, and a less response.
All my building is a.
Yeah, I'd like to have Paul come up. That's what he is the big bucks for.
Well, I think, I think essentially because Paul used to be a city employee, they're comfortable with talking to him, so I guess that's something.
Everybody loves Paul.
Oh, well, so was I. Never mind.
Paul, sorry to put you on the spot after your nice vacation.
Thank you.
Would you like to fill us in with what you've heard or how you're?
The meeting that I had with our chief, Bill, and Rachel Clark is, they're going to run, put ambulances in Station 2, 3, and 6, and they're going to run those same territories. We're in the process of trying to figure out the best way to enter that into the CAT system, so we make sure that we get the proper units sent. You know? My, my job is to, if we can make it work, I've got to make it work. So I don't have a time, timeframe. I do know that before they do anything, they've got to get their certifications back from the state, which I believe they indicated they should, should get this week sometime, and they've got a couple of weeks of training with their people. So we're at least two weeks out, I would think.
So here again, this will be in here, the fire trucks that they used to send first, so now it's going to be an ambulance?
We're still going to send first responders and first responders are going to go everywhere as, as they've been doing. And then in those areas of 2, 3s, and 6s, we're going to send those ambulances to those, those areas. First responders are, are not going to change. They're still going to roll through out of the city.
Now, if you have, just have two calls in one area, you're going to send one ambulance to one call, where's the other one going to come from since they're just going to stay in their own little area? Or will you guys send them across the tracks to respond to the second call?
We were told that they'll respond anywhere that we send them to.
Okay? Because I thought the whole thing was they were going to have them in areas, so they didn't go across the railroad tracks to where, if they got a call on the other side of the railroad tracks to come back, they didn't have to do that. They were going to stay in one area.
Right. It's my understanding those will be the primary areas that Chief Bill has. but Chief Bill has stated that if we need to send them elsewhere, they will respond. So at this point, without any of the interlocal or intercept play, you know, pieces in place, we don't know yet who is going to be, that's, that's the big question mark for us, is who's going to do the intercepts and whether it's going to be Delaware County, or whether it's going to be another local ambulance agency, and how that's all going to be worked out.
Yeah, because I didn't know.
I still say John, have John write a letter and see if we can't get some of those answers. John, you'll get back? I'd be happy to.
My thing is, is they're bringing up about the reason why, one of the reasons why, and the big reason why they're doing it, is because of the railroad tracks.
They don't have anything to do with railroad tracks, so no one has to do that. It's about manpower.
Yeah, well, I just want to make the point across that railroad tracks are everywhere.
Everywhere.
They're only going to have three ambulances. And at all point in time, they're going to have to cross railroad tracks.
Absolutely.
I can believe you got to cross railroad tracks to go to Ball Hospital. Yeah. Somewhere, so.
Maybe they're going to start taking on Jay County and Anderson, so they don't have to cross railroad tracks.
Everywhere else? Or maybe they'll have a vision where they'll, you know, underground tunnels and overpasses and everything else, and so make more money that way, I guess. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing a motion for recess.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes, thank you.